All right, the April 5th meeting is called to order. Can we have the roll, please?
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Aaron O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna. Here. Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Pulis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
And Greg Strike is excused. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Please type into the chat if you would like to approve the minutes. Move by Commissioner Krishna is there second. Seconded by Commissioner Spinelli. Any objections? Seeing no objections, the minutes are approved. Moving on to disclosures. I will start with myself and I have no disclosures. Commissioner Spinelli, do you have any disclosures?
Nothing.
Commissioner Gardner.
No disclosures.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester.
I was absent at the last meeting, so I won't be participating in the consent agenda. Other than that, no disclosures.
Thank you. Commissioner Pulis? And Scott, correct me again, how do I pronounce your last name?
Pulis.
Pulis, all right. Commissioner Pulis.
It used to be Pelichi. I have something to disclose. Even though the lowest and 32nd improvement is not a public hearing, I thought I should declare that I am a civil engineering subconsultant to an architecture firm currently working on building and site improvements for the Aquarian School. So it's adjacent to that project.
All right, since it's not working on the project itself, but you're working on a project that's adjacent to the project currently before us, I don't think that that would warrant a conflict of interest. So unless there's any objection, I would suggest that you can participate. Seeing no objection, you can participate. Commissioner Ron.
No disclosures.
And as I stated earlier, I have no disclosures as well. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Please type into the chat if you would like to move to approve the consent agenda. Move by Commissioner O'Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, the consent agenda has been approved and Commissioner Winchester's abstention has been noted. Moving on to our next order of business, case 2021-0031. Can we hear from the petitioners? I believe you'll be presenting using the screen as well. Oh, sorry. Can we have the staff report first?
Thank you, Chair Bailey. So this project proposes to upgrade non-motorized connectivity along Lowest Drive from Benson Boulevard to West 32nd Avenue. That's a distance of about .2 miles. And West 32nd Avenue from Lowest Drive to Minnesota Drive, a distance of about .23 miles. Current conditions include discontinuous pedestrian corridor. The design study report states that both roadways have areas of pavement deterioration and that the roadways also do not have enough street lighting or drainage collection systems. Just a reminder that the commission reviewed the concept report for this project as an informational item at a meeting in May of 2020. Staff mentioned the project would use a complete streets methodology. The commission had asked about how other pedestrian corridors may align with the project. Other pedestrian projects that were mentioned at the meeting did not have a direct connection to this one, but other potential projects in the area are Spinnard Road and upgrades to 32nd Avenue and 33rd Avenue. There are no other concerns discussed at the concept report stage. So now we're at the design study report phase. After this, the project would be reviewed by the Urban Design Commission at the plans in hand phase. I'll just go over briefly my review of the design study report that's in accordance with Title 21, Chapter 3, Section 190b4. For traffic conditions, Lowest Drive will be built to neighborhood collector standards and West 32nd Avenue would be built to secondary local urban residential roadway standards. And that's required by the official streets and highway plan. This is expected to match forecasted traffic volumes. For existing land use, land use along the project corridor contains single-family residential, multifamily residential, and office building and commercial businesses. There are several photos that help to summarize the existing conditions in my staff report that I pulled from the DSR. The project corridor traverses several zoning districts, including R2M mixed residential, R3 mixed residential, R4 multifamily residential, RO residential office, and PLI, Public Lands and Institutions. These current zoning districts are consistent with the land use plan. The land use plan shows compact mixed residential low to the west and south of the project corridor and neighborhood corridor, community facility or institution, and neighborhood corridor to the east and south of the project. The land use plan also adds an overlay of transit-supported development for much of the project corridor and the upgrades to pedestrian pathways support this overlay. For alternatives, the applicant had a no-action alternative and then four alternatives that had sub choices for Lowest Drive, West 32nd Avenue, and the intersection of Lowest Drive and West 32nd Avenue. The applicant's preferred alternative is Alternative 2 for Lowest Drive, Alternative 3 with 3A and 3B denoting a different design for the east and west ends of the roadway for 32nd Avenue, and then Alternative 3 for the intersection of Lowest Drive and West 32nd Avenue. The preferred alternatives minimize impacts to adjacent properties while still improving pedestrian facilities separate from the roadway. And I'll just go over briefly the preferred alternatives. So again, for Lowest Drive, it was Alternative 2, which has two 11-foot wide vehicle travel lanes with three-and-a-half-foot wide shoulders and barrier curb and gutter. There's also 10-foot wide paved pathway on the east side of Lowest Drive and a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk on the west side. And the pathway and sidewalk would be separated from the back of the curb with a four-and-a-half-foot buffer. Alternative 2 for Lowest Drive is preferred because there's minimal requirements for public utility easements and slope easement acquisitions. It is referred over Alternative 4, which doesn't address roadway pavement issues and only adds a pathway. And it is referred over Alternative 3 because it provides more buffer space between the pedestrian facilities and the roadway. For West 32nd Avenue, Alternative 3 is the preferred alternative. So again, that's 3A and 3B denoting the different designs. This would add along the Aquarian Charter School 10-foot wide vehicle travel lanes with one-foot wide shoulders as well as a 10-foot wide paved pathway on the north side of West 32nd Avenue. There would not be pedestrian facilities along the south side of West 32nd Avenue adjacent to Aquarian Charter School and the pathway would be separated by a seven-foot buffer. Marked crosswalk would allow pedestrians to cross the street to move to different sides of the pathway. Alternative 3 was referred for West 32nd Avenue because it addresses roadway improvements unlike Alternative 4. It also would not locate the utility poles within the median of the roadway, which provides an advantage over Alternatives 1 and 2. For the intersection, the preferred alternative was Alternative 3. This was preferred over Alternative 1 because that alternative would have required significant property acquisition and utility impacts. Alternative 2 is not preferred, also due to property and utility impacts, including property acquisition requirements. The design study report is consistent with plans, including the 2020 comprehensive plan and the 2040 land use plan, the West Anchorage District Plan, and the Anchorage Pedestrian Plan. No members of the public or community council submitted comments. Several agencies submitted comments and those are summarized in the staff report. The department recommends approval of the preferred alternatives identified in the context-sensitive solutions design study report for the Lowest Drive and West 32nd Avenue upgrades and pathway report, which are Alternative 2 for Lowest Drive, Alternative 3, 3A and 3B for West 32nd Avenue, and Alternative 3 for the intersection of Lowest Drive and West 32nd Avenue, subject to the following conditions of approval. Revised the buffer width between the sidewalk and pathway from four-and-a-half feet to the required seven feet or obtain a variance from the municipal engineer. Provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan prior to the start of construction and resolve with the traffic department any warrants for all-way stop intersections in mid-block crosswalks. Those conditions were based on comments that we received from agencies. That's the end of my staff report.
Thank you. Before I go to questions, I just want to announce I did not do our public hearing procedure because this is not a public hearing, but I do want to state that an individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except for commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for appeal is required at the time of filing. Thank you. Would any members of the commission like to ask staff a question before I move to the petitioner? Seeing no questions in the queue, can we hear from the petitioner?
This is Erica Johnson. Can you guys all hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you. You may want to speak a little bit louder, but that could just be on my end.
Okay. I'll move the phone closer. Hopefully that helps. I have the presentation. Is it okay if I go ahead and share my screen?
So far, the screen, oh, yep, it is now being shared.
Okay. So thank you for having us. I'll keep this brief because a lot of it was already addressed in both the staff report, but I wanted to offer the time to ask any more questions and go into some more details about some of the items. Here's just an overview of the project team and the project location, as we stated, was Lowest Drive from Benson Boulevard to 32nd and 32nd from Lowest Drive to Minnesota. Again, the project is analyzing alternatives to improve the non-motorized connectivity on Lowest Drive and West 32nd Avenue. The project is currently needed because there are the non-continuous, non-motorized facilities. The pavement is deteriorated and the roadway and drainage systems are in poor condition. The proposed improvements will include improved roadway structural section, asphalt pavement and curb and gutter, storm drain system infrastructure, pedestrian facilities, street lighting, and signage and landscaping. As we talked about both in the staff report as well as in the concept report, this project is in line with all the guiding documents. It is also the highest priority capital project for 2019 for Spinnard Community Council. It follows the official streets and highways plan. Sidewalks are identified as missing on West 32nd Avenue from Lowest to Minnesota, I'm sorry, from Lowest to Minnesota for 32nd and on Lowest from Northern Life to 36th in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. It is in line with the Anchorage Land Use Plan, the Anchorage Bowl 2020, sorry, I missed that, Zero Comprehensive Plan, West Anchorage District Plan, as well as the Anchorage Pedestrian Plan. Here is a figure of the adjacent zoning. Another thing I'd like to point out on this one are the yellow bus stops here, here, and here. The project area is actually within two different elementary school zone areas, Ternigan Elementary School and Northwood ABC Elementary School. So these are the bus stops for those two elementary schools. The project area is actually within the walking radius for both middle school, ROMIC, as well as the high school west. So there are no bus stops for middle school and high school students along the project corridor. Additionally, in the 2040 Anchorage Land Use Plan, some of the key items to note are the anticipated growth over here in the dark maroon with the areas of little growth and things that are already highly developed. The areas of significant growth coincide with the town center designation. And in addition to that, there's also the neighborhood centers in this same color, as well as the community facility or institution. This location right here is Anchorage Aquarian Charter School. It is a charter school, but there are neighborhood kids that attend it. One of the things, a couple of the items for the charter school, though, are there is no busing to the charter school, so all the students are either required to walk to school or be driven to school. With the town center, the town center over in this area is a large pedestrian generator for the residents along here. So there is a large generation of pedestrian activity between those two areas utilizing the project corridor. Some of the existing conditions, the ride-of-way width on Lowest Drive varies between 60 to 65 feet, so decent ride-of-way width. On West 32nd Avenue, though, it varies from 60 feet to 30 feet. And we'll go over this later, but it's 30 feet along here. So that was one of our big design challenges. There are no wetlands, creeks, or other water bodies along the project corridor. There are no back floodplains. The existing landscape is mostly unmaintained landscape. However, there are a few low maintenance areas in some of the newly constructed homes over in this area. The area is not public water and sewer. And then another big design aspect that we had to overcome was there are CEA transmission poles located along West 32nd Avenue for the whole length of that project area. Existing conditions, traffic. The posted speed along both roadways is currently 25 miles per hour. As was stated, Lowest Drive is a neighborhood collector. It is currently a paved two-lane roadway with traffic volumes of about 2,600, measured in 2020, and estimated to be 3,120, 45 the design year. The 85th percentile speed is 29 to 30 miles per hour. There's two different speeds because we took them directionally. So one was 29, one was 30. West 32nd Avenue is a local roadway. It is also a strict paved two-lane roadway, with traffic volumes of 1,120, 20, and estimated to be about 1,420, 45. The 85th percentile speed is also low. It's 21 to 24. Again, that was directional distribution. This data was taken from both the municipality of Anchorage, the State of Alaska, and also new traffic data studies that we conducted for the project. Additional traffic information, the collisions. We studied the intersection of Lowest Drive and West 32nd Avenue that is currently a four-way all-stop intersection, and it has a collision rate of 0.34. The State of Alaska puts out a Highway Safety Improvement Program manual, and it rates the expected collisions you would experience at different types of intersections. Signalized four-legs, signalized three-legs, four-way all-stops. This collision rate at Lowest and 32nd is less than the expected at a four-way all-stop. So what that means is it doesn't warrant additional treatment for crash-related mitigation. The level of service, that means how fast cars are able to move through this intersection, how long is the delay, is an A, which is the best you can get for level of service. We did do a four-way stop analysis at Lowest and 32nd, and it does not meet the warrants for a four-way stop intersection there. We also conducted parking studies. For most of the project, there is sufficient available off-street parking. However, there are some locations along 32nd that did utilize on-street parking. We conducted a pedestrian study. However, we think these were pretty skewed because of COVID. We were trying to track the number of kids walking to school, so, well, we would like to readdress that later. A big issue for the traffic, though, is obviously the discontinuous sidewalks. For drainage, the existing conditions along Lowest, the pipe sizes are currently 10 to 15 inches, and they're corrugated metal pipes, CMP pipes, and they are constructed in 1980s. And one thing I'll point out now, because I'll bring it up later, is this pipe, we do plan to replace that because it is downstream of our project and currently undersized. So that pipe on 31st will also be upgraded. Along 32nd, the pipes are 12 to 15 inches. They're reinforced concrete and they're constructed in 1972. As you can see, the pipes are discontinuous along the project corridor, and that combined with the relatively flat grades results in significant ponding concerns along the project corridor. Stakeholder outreach. We did a lot of stakeholder outreach. We followed the context-sensitive solutions, and we have an interactive map on the website where people were able to go and click on a location and state their exact problem, like dark here, no lighting here, can't see here, or pothole here, or whatever their issue was. We presented at the Spinnard Community Council. We did project mailers as well as e-newsletters associated with the open houses and other meetings. We did our public open house in November of 2019. We had a business stakeholder meeting as well as an agency stakeholder meeting in November of 2019 as well. We presented the concept report to you in April of last year, and we did our public open house number two in August of 2020. This picture was obviously pre-COVID. We talked to the stakeholders at the first open house, and their concern consisted of lack of pedestrian facilities was the big one. There was mention of a one-way road on 32nd. We did look into this, but in order to make a road one-way, you have to do a full area-wide analysis to make sure you're not creating problems on other roads. You often also have to include a couplet road going the other direction. That was well beyond the scope of this project, and so working with the traffic department, we decided that was beyond the scope of this project and we would not pursue further. Parking and queuing at Aquarian Charter School was an issue. Speeding was mentioned as an issue. However, our data did not confirm that that was an actual issue. They were concerned with loss of landscaping, but at the same point, there was a complaint that people felt unsafe walking because they were hidden from the vegetation and the landscaping and the lack of lighting. Drainage issues, like I mentioned. They would like to have seen the improvements extend south of 32nd. We'll get into why that was also outside of the scope and challenging. And then the roadway surface conditions and sinkholes, a lot of times because of the drainage issues. In general, we found support for street lighting, improved drainage, provide continuous pedestrian facilities, improve roadway surface improvements, and do provide on-street parking for 32nd, which is a local road, so it is in agreement with that. For our design standards, we followed the Design Criteria Manual, Title 21. We designed Lowest to a neighborhood collector, 32nd to a local road. One thing I'll point out now, though, that we are going to request a waiver from the Design Criteria Manual is we would like to post both roadways at 25 miles per hour. As a neighborhood collector, Lowest Drive should be posted at 30 and designed to 35. However, currently, right now, they're both posted at 25. We didn't feel a need to raise them, especially because this project is focused on multimodal use and pedestrian pathways. So we are recommending that both roadways be posted at 25 miles per hour, designed to 30. Some of the significant design challenges. There is only 30 feet of ride-of-way east at the eastern end of 32nd in front of the Anchorage Sands apartment, like I drew on that first slide.
I just want to chime in that your time is up. However, if you want to wrap things up in the next, I'll give you an additional minute or so to wrap things up.
I am so sorry. I didn't realize I had, I didn't realize I had that time constraint. I apologize so much. I'll go over the recommended alternatives. Alternative 2 has the reduced buffer, the four-and-a-half feet. This reduces the impact to things outside of the ride-of-way. Alternative 3, the intersection is a roundabout. We scooted it to the north and the east to avoid the utility poles, and it results in a three-leg roundabout, but it functions perfectly adequately. For 32nd Avenue, the preferred alternative is a two-part alternative, 3A and 3B. On the eastern end in front of Aquarian Charter School, we would put the pathway on the north side. We provide a buffer, so that way we can put the transmission poles and not move them or not touch them. And then we would transition to a pathway on the south side to avoid full acquisition of the Anchorage Sands apartments. So in general, our alternatives were focused on reducing and minimizing impacts to adjacent properties, especially full acquisitions. We were trying to avoid that wherever possible, as well as avoiding impacts to the CEA transmission lines. With that, those are the recommended alternatives, and I apologize again. I would have reduced this significantly.
All right, there's a good chance that you can fill in some of that during questions from commissioners. I'm going to first, I'm actually going to go and skip the order and go to Commissioner Spinelli, whose question is, can you please tell us anything that was left out? So it believes he's given you a very open-ended question to kind of fill out your presentation. So feel free to answer more, to get in more thoroughly if you felt you were rushed in some of your last minute of the presentation.
I guess one of the big things is the alternative. Lowest Drive was pretty uncomplicated. It's a pretty straightforward roadway. I'll go back up to that one. And what we tried to do is balance the impact to the adjacent properties, but still provide separation between the pedestrians. We do understand we'll have to get a variance to the MOAD CM, as I noted here, because we are only proposing a four-and-a-half-foot buffer. But with a full seven-foot buffer, we would require public use easements and slope easements across the entire project corridor. So we didn't feel that difference in buffer made up for it, and the traffic department supported that as well. For the intersection, some of the big challenges were, you can see the ride-of-way is offset. Here is the ride-of-way on this side, but the ride-of-way over here is way over on this corner, and they don't line up. So our challenges were how do we balance the roadway improvement within the existing constraints of this intersection? In addition to that, there's a high-power transmission pole right there. So those were the constraints we were up against for the intersection. This one is not recommended because it would require acquisition of this parcel. The utility pole is right there. We put it in a median, but again, it's still in between two lanes of traffic, and it's not ideal. So that was kind of the impetus behind what we did with Lowest Drive. For 32nd, the big challenge you can see is the CEA transmission pole, which is right in the middle of the roadway. So Alternatives 1 and 2 both had varying lane widths and buffers, but the transmission poles were still located in the roadway and not ideal. They also required full acquisitions of Anchorage Sands Apartments, and that is going to be highly complicated and involved because it is a lower-income multifamily housing. We did not want to require that. So we came up with this third alternative, which shifted, and it will require a variance because there's only a pedestrian facility along one side of the roadway, but we felt this was the best balance to provide improvements to the roadway, the pedestrian facilities, the lighting, the drainage, all of those aspects, but not require full acquisition. We would not require acquiring Anchorage Sands Apartments. We would install full frontage rolled curb, so that is a variance we'd need from Title 21 because Title 21 requires the vertical curb. We do expect, anticipate that Anchorage Sands Apartment, full frontage driveway, or whatever you want to call it, the parking lot, is a legal, non-conforming feature. We have not confirmed this, but we anticipate it will be because of the date of construction of this apartment complex, which was about 1960. They don't know for sure. It's between 1958 and 1965. Again, we wanted to accommodate the pathway with the use up here where we see a lot of pedestrians walking along the school, but move it to the south side again to avoid acquisition of the parcel. The roundabout, we tried to avoid properties, this house, this house, this house, and as well as the utility pole. So those were the items that we came up with. We looked at a pathway-only alternative, which would meet the pedestrian improvement goal, but does not improve any of the drainage of the roadway or the roadway lighting. So those were not recommended because they didn't meet the ultimate goal of the project. This slide would be the last one. The variances we are requesting from Title 21 are, we would install rolled curb, like I mentioned, along the west portion of 32nd, just on the north side. And then also on 32nd, we are recommending a single pedestrian facility with a crosswalk, a marked crosswalk, to transition between the sidewalk on the north, or the pathway on the north side and the pathway on the south side. the north side and the pathway on the south side. Thank you for that question.
Thank you, or I should say, thank you, Commissioner Spinelli. Moving to, I'm not sure, Commissioner Krishna, did you have a question from earlier for staff?
No, I didn't.
Okay. I have a question for the petitioner. Could you perhaps go back to the slide for, it was 32nd Street, the preferred alternative?
Yes.
So my question is, looking at the preferred walkway on this, is you're essentially having someone walk on the whole same side of the street, and then are we really expecting people to switch and walk over on the other side of the street for two-and-a-half blocks to get to the main thoroughfare? And to me, I just think that's kind of an unreasonable expectation, and I feel like what's actually going to happen is people are going to continue to walk on that side of the street that they've been walking this whole time. And as a follow-up question, because obviously that was a very biased question, was there any consideration of potentially shifting the alignment of the road so that the pedestrian walkway could still be on the north side of 32nd for the whole way?
We did look at shifting the road, because currently, one of the challenges is the road, the existing roads are not centered in the existing rideaway. The existing roads are lined up with the rideaway, like, south and west of it. So as you can see, the blue line here is the rideaway line, so we did shift the road as far south as we could. We are going to have to require rideaway acquisition even to construct this pathway. The real pinch point is these structures, as well as the utility poles. We could not get adequate parking in the pathway, and in addition to that, even if some locations did have adequate parking, like maybe right here, you could get parking and you could still get the pathway, we did not want cars backing across the pathway. It's a conflict point that we try to avoid. So looking at all of those aspects, combined with the complication of relocating this, we felt it was best to try to encourage, but as you're right, I can't make them walk where I want them to walk, but our facilities will only be provided on the south. One thing that does help us is there is Minnesota Park over here. So their destination could switch sides from Minnesota Park to the school. It was the best we felt we had in terms of reducing conflict points. Again, we don't want cars backing over pedestrian facilities. In addition to that, if we did provide the pedestrian facility on this side, our experience tells us that vehicles just start using it as parking, not reserving it for the pedestrian facilities. So by separating, here's where these people park, here's where people walk, at least we could provide it for them. Whether or not they use it is their choice.
Yeah, I guess just more specifically to follow up on my question is, I was potentially hoping that maybe there could be an alternative where the road didn't completely line up and it shifted at the intersection. I know that in this neighborhood, that's not completely uncommon. I'm also just concerned that we're creating a situation where not only, I understand that there is a conflict with people from the apartment complex potentially going over, but if there's also not a pedestrian walkway there, and we know that it is unlikely that people are going to shift across the street for two blocks, we're then signaling to the apartment that they don't have to look for pedestrians with there not being a walkway there. And so I'm not sure if there, again, isn't, if your alternative still isn't the best, I just kind of wish that had been evaluated, just because I feel it's very unlikely that any pedestrian is going to switch sides of the roads for two blocks when there is kind of open parking spaces that look like you could walk there.
I don't think it's unlikely to expect it because there is a destination there in terms of Minnesota Park, but I can't control what people do. You're right. What way were you thinking you wanted to see the road shifted, to the north or the south?
I was thinking that at, it's labeled as alley number three, that the roadway could be shifted south so that a pedestrian way could still be on the north side of the road.
We shifted the road as south as we could go without impacting properties. And with that, though, we also did not want to construct a pathway at the back of a parking lot. So even had there been sufficient space up here, we still would have needed some manner of buffer, curbed barrier between the parking area and the pedestrian pathway, because unless it's like a single-family driveway, and we don't want to put the pathway behind the cars, we shifted the road as far south as possible. We did do that, but putting a pathway behind parked cars isn't ideal for safety aspects.
Thank you. Commissioner Polis.
Yeah, I wanted to just piggyback off that question a little bit. The mid-block crossing versus the crossing at Minnesota. I noted in the DSR that there were some head accidents in the history of that. Is there an opinion that moving that crossing to mid-block is a safer location than at Minnesota Drive? That's the question.
Yes, there is a history of pedestrian vehicle near misses, as well as vehicle-vehicle crashes at Minnesota Drive. It wasn't noted that it would necessarily be safer, but we will actually refine the location of this mid-block crossing. Right now, it's a little offset from the intersection, and one of the challenges is because there's the utility poles that we're trying to avoid as well, because we'd like to get it as close to an intersection as possible to be safest. I think the improved pedestrian facilities and sightlines and general road will hopefully help reduce those crashes by providing a place for pedestrians. But that specific aspect of it, moving it to mid-block, was not looked at or mentioned in terms of traffic stating this should help.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the petitioner or staff? Commissioner O'Quinn?
Hey, thank you. Through the chair, I just, there was a lot of discussion about the Aquarian School and the kind of traffic issues that occur during pickup and drop-off, and I think there was a photo even in the design study report about that. But I didn't really hear, you know, how this design kind of implements, I know the shoulder's going to be a little bit wider, but could you maybe talk a little bit more about what you all considered with regard to the school pickup and drop-off traffic in this design?
We did. We spent a lot of time looking at that, and the final consensus was the rideaway should not be being used for school drop-off or pickup. It is right now. This whole area is open right here, and cars park like three-deep. We looked at the alternative that could provide a parking lane. We looked at that alternative here. We looked at the parking lane alternative, but because we were trying to accommodate it, knowing that it is a concern, but we could not get that to work with the transmission poles, the transmission poles were the big one. So we, knowing it was an issue, we tried to accommodate it. However, school drop-off and pickup is something that does actually need to be addressed on-site, on Aquarian Charter School's property.
Do you have any follow-up, Commissioner O'Quinn?
I mean, not really, other than that, you know, they seem to be pretty spaced, I'm not familiar with their operation, but they seem to be pretty space-constrained, and so, you know, the use could change over the years. Maybe, you're probably absolutely right that the city's infrastructure shouldn't really be bending around that use, but, you know, it does seem like, you know, especially removing the area where they do now line up, that the problem's going to be exacerbated, you know, because they are going to continue to use the rideaway, even though they maybe should not be.
With these proposed improvements, they won't be able to, because we are installing curb and gutter, and that will be the difference. I agree. It's a challenging point because it, the school, part of the other problem with the school site is it was, it's not a permanent school site. I know they're making improvements to the school, but if you remember on the bonds last year, it was this big issue, because Aquarian Charter School leases this site, and it isn't a permanent school site. That's meaning that they could actually be pulled from that school site at any time. No, it does not seem likely that's the case, because they are making improvements to the school, and it was bonded, but that's another reason that, from like a permanent standpoint, it's hard to say that, you know, one, it's not the municipality's job to accommodate the school's onsite circulation, and two, that isn't even a permanent school site. So those are some of the nuances that we were looking at when we were addressing this.
Okay, but at least, I mean, in the short term, while this, once this project's built out with the curb and gutter, the vehicles will be obstructing the travel lane and not, you know, the travel lane, and, you know, there'll be more vehicles in the travel lane because they won't be able to access the, you know, what is now the non-curbed area.
Thank you for the party. Yeah.
So there will be many, many more vehicles in the travel lane.
Yes, their queues will be longer in the rideaway.
Okay. Thank you.
And we did look at trying to address that with the parking lane, but the utility poles prevented that alternative from being used.
Commissioner Gardner?
Sorry for the delay there and unmuting. I was wondering if you could just speak briefly to what the crossing looks like on Loess, going from the west side to the east side, and if you have an image that you could show of where that would take place and what that would look like?
I do not have an image. Are you thinking like a screenshot view?
Well, yeah, and I mean, I assume it takes place, you know, someone would need to walk down to the roundabout.
Oh, I'm sorry. Loess and 32nd.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this, though, we have not, we have not totally finalized, and we just, we're combining alternatives and we put these together, and that's why this piecemeal of recommended two, three, and three. There's nothing to say we couldn't add a sidewalk here, so that way, somebody walking east and west along 32nd wouldn't have to go all the way around the roundabout. They could, we could absolutely put a crosswalk here for them, and, yeah.
And then on the north side, is there a crosswalk option in Plan Two for someone who, you know, if someone's living on the west side?
Yes. There, this crosswalk.
Oh, I see that there. Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't do the whole intersection pictures by themselves, but yes, that one, that's a good point, that this would be a good location at another crosswalk to prevent them from going to go all the way around.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Polis?
Yeah, one more thing about the Aquarian congestion issues. Do you guys think that roundabout will relieve a little bit of that drop-off and pickup congestion, not having that stop controlled over there?
Yes, I do, because I know a lot of people right now go just one direction to get to Aquarian Charter School, to avoid, you know, obviously Minnesota's a one-way, this way, sorry, and Benson is a one-way, that way. So a lot of people do this certain loop, but I think the roundabout will help that because this will become a much easier movement for people to make. And ideally, one of the reasons that we wanted to do this is we heard a lot of comments from the parents of Aquarian Charter School, that they would let their kids walk to school. Again, I know it's a charter school, but we did hear a lot of parents live in the neighborhood, and they would like to have their kids walk to school, but they just didn't feel safe because of the lack of pedestrian facilities. So we did hear from parents that if you constructed, if there was a safe walking route, my kids would be walking to school, not, I would not be driving them. So part of the reason we didn't sacrifice certain aspects of the proposed improvements, such as moving these, really, actually, they won't let you underground transmission lines. It wasn't an option. We could not underground these transmission lines. We, our hope is that when we provide these facilities, more people will use them to walk to school versus drive.
Okay, okay. Last question or two is about drainage?
Yes. Thanks for that one. Yes.
I know from experience, when you upsize pipes, you increase your runoff. You guys did downstream analysis, I'm assuming, to resolve that?
Yes, and that is why I pointed to that one pipe. We're going to replace and upside the undersized pipe on 31st Avenue. Yes.
Did you guys chase that thing to Fish Creek and nothing else needed upsize it?
I believe we did, because I do know we only have to go to the manhole, so I can say with confidence we did.
Yeah, I'm not going to dig into that. I just wanted to check on all that stuff. And then I'm assuming you guys will probably get a green infrastructure waiver at some point?
Yes, yes, based on the rideaway width.
Okay, yep. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner or for staff? Seeing no questions in the queue, what is the will of the body? Specifically, if you have a motion, if you could type into the chat that you have a And just for advice, there is a department recommendation on page 19 of your staff report. Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. So I'll move in case number 2021-0031, which is the Context-Senseless Solutions Design Study Report to approve the preferred alternatives identified in the staff packet with the subject to the conditions of approval provided on page 19.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, just briefly, I'll say, at first, it looks like there was, they kind of worked closely with the public, including the residents most immediately affected by these changes. This is something that the local community has prioritized, making these improvements. And from our discussion today and from the presentations, it looked like a lot of thought has gone into making the most effective design possible, given the restrictions in place, and that this design also is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the local West Anchorage District plan.
Seeing no one else.
That's it, thank you.
Sorry, did you have further you wanted to add?
No, sorry. I was just making clear I was done.
All right. Seeing no one else in the queue, I will just make a comment that I think the petitioners did a really good job of balancing a lot of tight concerns in this area. Obviously, I was critical of a couple nitpicky things here and there. I think this is a case where there really isn't an easy solution. I feel like a lot of times, we get transportation issues in front of us where there's a very clear preferred alternative, and the petitioner did a very good job of trying to piece together the best option that is out there, keeping all the considerations in place. So not a perfect world, but they did a very good job with what they were working with. Seeing no one else in the queue, I will call for a vote. Commissioner Spinelli? Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
Commissioner Polis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ron?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. That motion passes. And it's a good thing Commissioner Strike isn't here to jump to a motion to adjourn, because I also just want to state on the record that Commissioner Winchester has been appointed to the AMAT CAC, and he is officially the Planning and Zoning Commissioner Representative on the AMAT CAC, so. So, thank you, Commissioner Winchester, in advance of all the work I'm sure you're going to be doing, and we look forward to hearing reports back and you representing us.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing else on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn? Or do you guys want to hang out with me the rest of the night? Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Krishna, and then I'm seeing a whole bunch of seconds in the queue, so I'll take that as a second, and I'm also going to take that as no objection. So, we are, I guess officially, I'll give Commissioner O'Quinn the second, and then say, seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.